Good morning, everyone. Welcome to the Wednesday, July 3rd, meeting of the Board of County Commissioners for Deschutes County. Thank you for joining us today and appreciate you being here before the holidays and look forward to the meetings today. Can you please join us with a pledge of allegiance?
Pledge of allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic for which it stands, one nation under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for
So our primary purpose, I think, today, and the reason that many of you are here is for a hearing we're going to have on our marijuana regulations. If you got here and don't know, there's some blue forms like this up here that you'll want to sign or fill out and turn into Sharon over here. You can do it anytime while we get going here. Then those people will be asked to speak as we get into the hearing on that. There's, I think, also information over there about the regulations that were modified or what the modifications were, and there might be some copies of a PowerPoint. There'll be a PowerPoint kind of explaining this. Before we get to that, though, we, our first item is citizen input. That's for anybody that's not here for the hearing specifically but is here to testify about anything else. I didn't specifically get any forms on that, so if there's anyone like that, you can come up and testify and fill out the form afterwards. Is there any who wants to do that? Okay. One other thing I want to do, just because I'm going to do it until the event comes, I want to remind everybody, this is the 100th year of our Deschutes County Fair. Buttons like this are available. We hope you can come to it. If you haven't been to our fairgrounds, they're a great fairgrounds. Our fair is a great fair. We have some good entertainment, rodeos, et cetera. We're really looking forward to it. It starts on August 30th, or I mean, July 31st through August 4th. So Wednesday through Sunday, and we look forward to having you come there. The fairgrounds and Expo Center are part of what the county does, and we have a new fair director, and this is where we'll be starting our 100th, first year after this.
A hundred years of fun since day one.
Is that the, yeah, that's the motto. Okay. So the first item on the agenda is the consent agenda. Any changes or need to take anything out of that?
No.
Uh, nope.
Okay. I'm going to seek a motion to approve the consent agenda.
I move we approve our consent agenda today for July 3rd, 2019.
And I'll second it.
Okay. Any further discussion?
Just one comment. So the budget hearing minutes, you know, so we spent a whole week doing the budget. It's quite a project process. We start at the end of the year with just the assumptions, work with the department heads in the big picture of how the money flows into Deschutes County. So we spent a whole week doing that, and there's the minutes. So if anybody want to take time and read it, there's a, that's where the rubber hits the road for the dollars for the citizens, and I'm really proud of the work done by the whole organization on that.
Good. And additionally, we have some appointments here for different committees and a couple other matters, so, good. Any further discussion?
No.
Commissioner Dare?
Yes.
Commissioner DeBonne?
Yes.
Chair votes yes. So we will now convene as the governing body of the Black Butte Ranch Service District and consider appointment, letters of appointing Ricky Rose Godey, Lee Ferguson, and Curtis Abbott to the Black Butte Ranch County Service District Board.
So moved.
Okay.
Seconded.
Any further comments or, okay. Commissioner DeBonne?
Yes.
Commissioner Dare?
Yes.
Chair votes yes. And the second item for the Black Butte Ranch Service District is letters thanking Carol Gibson, Paul Jansen, and Steve Hamsberry for their service on the Black Butte Ranch Service District.
So moved.
Okay. And your vote, Commissioner DeBonne?
Yes.
Commissioner Dare?
Yes.
And the chair votes yes. Now, we will reconvene as the governing body for Deschutes County. Our first action item is consideration of Board Signature Resolution 2019-34, Public Use Restrictions of Wildfire Prevention, and Ed Keith, our forester, will present that.
Good morning, commissioners. Ed Keith, county forester. Today we have before you a set of public use fire restrictions. These are kind of standardized lists of fire restrictions that kind of mirror the restrictions that are already in place for Oregon Department of Forestry protected lands. These restrictions would apply to lands that are owned by the county as well as lands that are unprotected, so those lands that are outside of rural fire protection districts are outside of the Oregon Department of Forestry protection, basically where there's not a fire responding agency. These restrictions include things like campfires, the use of chainsaws during a particular period of time during the day when it's hot and dry, cutting of dry grass, and so forth. These are restrictions that we've placed each year since about 2014, and we, I would also just mention that there are ways, if some of these restrictions impede something that somebody wants to do on their property, there's a way for them to contact me and get a waiver if they want to supply additional fire protection capability. One example was, a couple of years ago, a landowner contacted me that was doing some rock pit development and blasting and things like that, and they supplied an extra tinder so that if that activity would cause a fire, they were able to respond to that. So there is a way for landowners to propose, if these restrictions are cumbersome in some way, additional, you know, we can work with them and negotiate appropriate fire protection for their lands as well, so we have that built in. The map that shows where these restrictions applies is online, set to go live, assuming that you would pass this resolution, and we do have maps available at my office as well. So if people are curious of where those or unclear where those lands are, we do have that area mapped as well. So with that, I entertain any questions or anything I can clarify for you.
Well, thanks, Ed. One of the things we saw in our work session Monday was the amount of areas that aren't in fire districts, and so we kind of got a better idea that there's certain areas of private land and that aren't within fire districts, which is part of this, and this doesn't apply to the federal lands, that they have their own regulations.
Correct.
So, and this sets, and so there's a resolution here approving these regulations, and then these are the restrictions, and these are, so these are available to people on the website, or?
Yes. I've also worked with Whitney, the Public Information Officer, and we have it, we do have a draft press release, again, assuming that you would pass this, ready to be sent out as well to the public, so that this is publicized through the various media channels.
And it seems like we do, is this, do we always do it right before the 4th of July? It seems like it's?
Yeah, it's not necessarily timed because of the 4th of July holiday, but it's typically the time that the weather starts to change to be hot and dry, our grasses start to cure out, we start to see more human-caused fires. We also try to time that in conjunction with, and usually not before, when Oregon Department of Forestry also imposes these regulations. They're meant to kind of mirror those regulations, but in lands that they don't have jurisdiction over, and they did impose those for their fire protection district on Friday, the 28th of June. So we usually look to them, they're tracking kind of fire causes, human-caused fires. They've seen, you know, a few escape campfires. We, of course, had the escaped debris burn in South County earlier in the year, but as those start to tick up and grasses start to dry out, that's usually the timing. It just happens to coincide usually with around the 1st of July.
A question kind of related, so we had all this lightning in the last few days and thunderstorms, where, did we have any fires that came from that?
We did. I don't know of any that went above an acre or two in Deschutes County. There were a couple that got larger in Wheeler County that I was aware of, in the 20 to 30 acre range. Again, they're, they have a, grasses that tend to dry out a little bit quicker, but we're, so we're just behind that. But there were fires that were caused by lightning, most of them less than a tenth of an acre. I think the largest one might have been between an acre or two. So not really large enough to kind of make most people's radar screens, but there have been, you know, a fair amount of responses due to the lightning.
You know, say, I think that in the 30 years I've been here, this is the greenest I've ever seen the desert.
Yeah.
I mean, there's more growth than I've ever seen, at least on the east side of Bend, and it's still probably grow, I mean, it's still green. It hasn't, because we've gotten so much water last, you know, these storms, that it's going to be a more risky fire season in a month or two than maybe ever in terms of just the amount of vegetation that's growing in the desert, so.
Yeah, I concur with that assessment. I think at least our native grasses, they dry out a little bit later. I'm starting to see the cheat grass start to kind of cure out, turn kind of purple or yellow, and so that, that grass component is getting to the point where it's available to burn, but, but yeah, a lot more growth this year just due to the rainfall and temperatures that we've had.
Comments? Sure. I think, yeah, the exercise of doing this, coordinating with the state of Oregon, reminding people there are unprotected lands, some rural residents that live in an area where there's no fire district, so even if there is a fire that happened to the resident's farm activity or in the wilderness, or, you know, the forested areas or whatever, there isn't a specific fire company that's coming, you know? Maybe the State Department of Forestry and all lands firefighting effort will happen if it grows, but that's a good reminder for all of us to understand some of those unprotected lands in the county, the rural counties, so.
Comments? Commissioner Dare?
I noticed that it said the use of fireworks is prohibited. Do you know the acreage that we're talking about for the, for your proclamation?
For the unprotected lands?
Yes.
I think it's right around 120,000 acres of unprotected land in Deschutes County.
Okay.
Those are primarily in eastern part of the county, brothers in Hampton areas generally, and then the kind of lower bridge, McKenzie Canyon areas, the other.
Where there isn't fire protection.
Correct. Yeah.
Right. Okay. Thank you.
Thanks. I'd ask for a motion approving this resolution.
I move we approve the resolution, number 2019-034, Public Use Restrictions for Wildfire Prevention.
And I'll second it.
Any further comments?
No.
Commissioner Dare?
Yes.
Commissioner DeBonne?
Yes.
Chair votes yes.
Thank you.
Thank you.
Thank you, Ed.
So the next item on the action, or next action item is number 10, the public hearing on reconsideration of marijuana text amendments. Tanya Saltzman will lead us off on that.
Good morning, everyone.
Do you want me to read my script?
Yes, please.
Okay. This, the time and place set for a hearing of county file number 247-18-000540 TA. Staff will outline the hearing procedures that will be.
The hearing's body, the Board of County Commissioners in this case, will take testimony and receive written evidence concerning file number 247-18-000540 TA. The applicant, Deschutes County, is requesting to reconsider a series of text amendments pertaining to the regulation and enforcement of recreational marijuana on rural lands in Deschutes County. All testimony shall be directed to the hearing's body. I believe we usually do three-minute time limits, but, yes. At the conclusion of this hearing, the hearing's body will deliberate towards a decision or continue the hearing or deliberations to a date and time certain. The hearing will proceed as follows. Staff, in this case also the applicant, will provide a brief report. Opponents and proponents will present their testimony and evidence. Any other interested persons will then present testimony or evidence. The applicant, as the party bearing the burden of proof, will then be afforded an opportunity to present rebuttal testimony and final comments. A full written version of the hearing procedures is available at the table at the side of the room. Commissioners must disclose any prior hearing observations, biases, or conflicts of interests.
Does any commissioner have anything to disclose? If so, please state the nature of the same and whether you can proceed.
So I would say, you know, this is following up on an effort from many years now, and I've been involved with this process the whole time. I am a rural resident of Deschutes County and, you know, the, and I don't have any connections with the industry specifically, so, yeah. I'm confident I can rule on this matter.
Commissioner Dare?
I have no connections.
Because my disclosure is somewhat like Commissioner DeBonne, we've been involved in the process now of the original, of implementing the original regulations for three years now that were, the ones that were passed in 2016. Was very involved in the process of the new regulations, which we approved all three of the commissioners at that time, and we've had quite a number of hearings on grows, retail and processing have approved some, disapproved others, and the county as a whole has approved quite a few, so I don't have any other thing to say.
So just one more comment. So this is a legislative matter for all citizens on this topic, so it's not a single specific property, so this is kind of more of that broad discussion.
Yeah. Yeah, that's a good point. There's, when we do quasi-judicial matters, there's more restrictions, like this is something we can actually talk to people after the hearing about their views as well as today. This kind of kicks off that. One of the things that's been kind of challenging in the past is a lot of people that want to talk about issues are involved in current appeals, so that's always a back and forth. But, yeah, this is something we're seeking public input and that, so.
Does any party, oh, excuse me.
Okay, go ahead. Yeah, sure.
Does any party wish to challenge any commissioner, member of the hearing's body, based on biases or conflicts?
So I'll now open the hearing and direct staff to proceed with a brief staff report.
Thank you, Commissioner. I will add, I can't quite see it from here, but if we have run out of any printouts of anything, please, my contact information is there, and I'm happy to email anybody any documents that you need. I know the PowerPoint can be a little difficult to see. For the record, Tanya Saltzman, associate planner. I'm going to give a little bit of background on the marijuana text amendment process, just to set the stage of where we've been and where we're going and why we're here today, because as you're probably well aware, we, the county adopted amendments last fall and we're back. So with that, ballot measure 91 was passed in 2014 at the state level. This legalized the production, possession, and distribution and use of recreational marijuana in certain amounts. HB 3400 kind of finessed this, allowing local governments to adopt reasonable regulations on the production, processing, wholesale, excuse me, and retail sale. In 2016, the legislature clarified that medical and recreational marijuana are considered farm crops, and as such, this allowed marijuana to be grown on land zone for exclusive farm use, subject to local, time, place, and manner restrictions. This is often referred to as TPM regulations. And over here in Deschutes County, in 2016, after a temporary opt-out to figure out the, to suss out the environment and consider their options, the Deschutes County Commissioners adopted marijuana regulations, and these were developed with input from a marijuana advisory committee. There was a series of meetings with stakeholders from the industry, from the community, and other interested parties to help develop these regulations. The next year, the board committed to the public as well as to the legislature to reevaluate these regulations after one year, to see how they were working, if they were working, if they were not working, et cetera. Based on the ensuing experience, that is, the applications that had come into the board for production facilities as well as public input, the board requested further refinements to the regulation and enforcement of marijuana. That brought us to last summer. I'm sure some of you were involved. There was a public process to consider revised text amendments. Sometimes we refer to them as the new amendments or proposed amendments. Throughout the summer of 2018, there were approximately eight work sessions with the board. There was a public hearing in late August, followed by several sessions of deliberations as well as an open record period. Those new text amendments were adopted in October of 2018, which brings us to today. Subsequently, 12 petitioners as a group filed a petition for review to the Land Use Board of Appeals, otherwise known as LUBA, on February 12, 2019. So they appealed it to the state level. In this argument, in this appeal, the petitioners argued new and expanded issues that weren't yet raised before the board. In other words, they weren't brought up at the local level, but they were first brought up to that higher level at the state. So because of that, legal counsel advised the county to file what's called a notice of withdrawal. So the county pulled back those amendments from the appeal temporarily for reconsideration, which is what today is kicking off. So this reconsideration provides the petitioners the opportunity to raise these issues back at the local level in front of the Board of County Commissioners, and provides the county as well as the public, all of you in this room and anybody else who cares to submit comments, the opportunity to hear these arguments and to respond to them. So the reconsideration is essentially the continued public process. It was a pause and a bit of a do-over, as it were. This is a hearing, there may be a second hearing, depending on the outcome of today. There'll be an open record period likely, and deliberation and decision, just like the first round. At the time of decision, the board can repeal the text amendments, which would mean the old text amendments would be in place. They can amend the text amendments based on any public input, perhaps there are little tweaks to the code that might be appropriate, or the board can take no action, which means the adopted new text amendments would remain unaltered, and we'd kind of be back where we were in October. So that's a little summary of why we're all here today. I hope this helps. It's a little bit of a confusing process. I'm going to just briefly summarize the proposed amendments that were adopted in October 2018. They also are in the hearing packet, if you're interested in looking at the text amendments themselves. The code chapters with proposed changes were the right to farm, the Redmond urban reserve area combining zone, supplementary provisions, site plan review, land use action hearings, and appeals. And just very briefly to touch on the kind of big topics in these amendments. The amendments clarify the right to farm ordinance with respect to ORS 475B. This is a law that allows reasonable regulations governing marijuana production. The amendments remove marijuana production and processing from the MUA 10 zone, multiple use agricultural, as well as the Redmond urban area combining zone. The amendments increase the minimum separation distances between production sites and certain other uses, as well as adds new uses to that category that require separation distances. The amendments increase the setbacks from lot lines and from off-site dwellings. They clarify the application requirements as well as the mitigation requirements for both odor and noise. They increase the noise standard to no greater than 45 dB, including ambient noise. dB is kind of an adjusted decibel level that accounts for the way the human ear works in terms of low frequencies and high frequencies. It's the general standard that's used for noise. The amendments clarify the requirements for the documentation of water usage. They increase the number of county inspections allowable per year from one to three, including one before the use is initiated, to make sure everything's in place and in working order. They increase public notifications to surrounding property owners, so a larger radius of property owners will be notified. They increase the time to appeal decisions, and they require proof of access for all production sites, and not just those with 5,000 square feet or more of mature canopy. And I should add that if you're more interested in the specifics, there is a little handout upfront, should still be there, that goes into the specifics of exactly what those setback changes are, what the separation distances are, and as well as the references to the sections in the code. This is just intended as a general overview. And that's a summary of the general amendments. As far as public comments, this is since the, since essentially the adoption in October, as of this morning, approximately five minutes before I walked over here, we've received two comments in opposition to the adopted amendments, one in support of them, six of them requesting the county to opt out of the marijuana program altogether, one comment from an agency, and one unrelated, semi-related comment pertaining to retail and the hours of operation. The options for the next steps after the public input process is for the board to continue the hearing to a date certain, to close the hearing and leave the written record open to a date certain, or to close the hearing and commence deliberations. And with that, I'll leave my contact information up here. I also have business cards over there if anybody wants to submit written comments, mail comments, carrier pigeon comments, however you want to get to me, I will receive comments happily. So with that, I bring it back to the board. Thank you.
Thanks, Tanya. So a couple more reminders again, if you were planning to testify today, please fill out one of these blue forms that are over on that table and hand them in to Sharon. Over here, we've got a pile of them here, we'll start going through soon. Also, one of the things we did in preparation is made a specific list of the areas where we did amend the regulations that were put in place in 2016. Part of our goal today is to get additional testimony on these particular regulations. Each of us may want to say a little bit as kind of a preface to the hearing, but a couple things I want to say is, so my view of these changes were a result of a variety of things. One was the commitment the original commissioners had made to review the regulations after they'd been in effect for a year. The following year, the, there was an effort in the legislature to eliminate our regulation, our ability to regulate it all, and one of the commitments we made to legislators, if they would back off on that, we would look at them again the following year. So we're following through with commitments made in terms of why we're doing the process. Another factor is that some of these regulations that we've done, we felt were, this was passed by all three of the board members at that time, Commissioner DeBonne, myself, and Commissioner Bany, when she was on the board. Some of these were efforts to clarify what we'd been asking at hearings anyway. Some of them were changes in response to things, some were solving problems that we couldn't really articulate very well here, and then there's just additional items that have come up. We've had testimony on a lot of this, but we'd like additional testimony of those specific to these, so if this list is something you can kind of follow along with, because it references the specific. A second part of this is that, as Tanya mentioned, one of the dilemmas that we've been put in as commissioners, is was we proceed in trying to regulate, reasonably regulate different grows based on the regulations that are passed. There's an ongoing effort in Salem to eliminate the ability to have any regulations at a state, at that county level, which kind of would nullify what we're doing to begin with, I guess, and yet that was the reason, I think Commissioner DeBonne would say this, and hopefully will, the reason we, the county commissioners that time opted into the process was because we had the right to regulate. So there's efforts to undo that. They were at the last session. We've been told they'll be at the next session of legislature. The other part is that in the appeals that were made, and I'm hoping some of the people that have made the appeal will speak, there was really issues raised about constitutionality and kind of various Bill of Rights issues, et cetera, that are kind of way beyond the scope of what we might be ruling on here that go, that will be brought up in the LUBA Pro, Land Use Board of Appeals process to the Court of Appeals, Supreme Court, could be brought up the legislature, and so we're working in the, kind of in the space that we understood we had as commissioners set out for us to work in, so that's, those are kind of preliminary thoughts.
So I will follow up. So the rural residential nature of our farm lands, the EFU zoned lands, intermixed with MUA 10 and rural residential parcels, the RR rural residential zoning, the smaller sized parcels in Deschutes County, that really has, you know, put me in a spot where how are we going to mitigate the impacts? And one of the things that comes very specifically is the smell regulations. We're trying to work with this new crop that's, this plant defined as a crop in the state of Oregon that does have a mature plant odor that, you know, can be offensive, and working with the industry saying, please, enclose your facility and do smell mitigation. This is the path that we were able to use that, you know, put those requirements in place in partnership with the industry. So I'm just kind of putting in perspective of what we've been dealing with.
Commissioner Dare, any open comments or thoughts?
Actually, last year, I was in the audience for part of the meetings, and I know they listened to, a lot of you, eight meetings plus regarding the impact from our rural community. The fact that it was, the vote from Deschutes County was in the mid-range between the 50 and the 55, and the commissioners, remember, initially opted in because they were told that they could regulate. We live in a very special county. We have, what is it, six destination resorts in Deschutes County. Our tourism is phenomenal, and I believe the commissioners did listen last year, and so that's why it's a good thing we're here for you today, to hear additional impact, because apparently we, LUBA, we do need to hear from you again. So thank you for being here today. So, thank you for being here today.
So, that, one other just kind of housekeeping thing or whatever is, I don't have the exact numbers, but just for people to know, this was in February, and I think there's been three or four since then. I think we had approved forty-nine marijuana production permits. Is there more than, or applications, is there more than that now, do you know, Tanya? I know of a couple more since then, but, and then we have, yeah, we have a chart that kind of tracks approvals and what the status is and with the O L C C.
Right.
And it's multi-pages. What's that?
Our data, forty-nine, correct, have been approved, nineteen of which have O L C C license.
And then seven, I have seven processing, three wholesaling, and two marijuana retail.
That's correct.
Okay. So, anyway. So, with that, we'll start the testimony, we're going to, I'm just going to go up through the stack as it's been kind of given to me. One thing I think would be helpful to us, because we're, we may have questions, but it would be kind of give us some idea whether you're a grower or in the marijuana business, a Farm Bureau member, or if you've been a part of the, one of the petitioners, because that's specifically something that we, we might have something, and then also if your neighbors, or kind of what's your, you know, what brings you here today would help us in kind of understanding our positions, I think. So, our first, this will be Tammy Thorel Kill, and then Suzanne Ritter. And Tammy might come up, and actually, it's fine with me if we have two at a time come up and, because we have quite a few of them. After that would be Sam Davis and Gretchen Peterson. So, yeah, so go ahead and have a seat and...
Don't sit.
Okay.
Thank you. My name's Tammy Thorell Kill, I live at two-three-three-four-four Alfalfa Market Road. First of all, I'd like to thank you all for everything we've been through together for the last year. The rules and regulations that were put in by MAC, as you know, actually were not adhered to, and that was why things were somewhat looked at again. There has been approximately, I'd say, maybe fifty-five percent of what has come in that has been okay and gone by the rules, however, the rest of them have not. Now, we live in Deschutes County, our county is a tourist town. We have physical recreation, skiing, hiking, horseback riding, bicycling, and that has always been, plus looking at the mountains, of course, our big tourist attraction. Recreational marijuana does not have a place here right now. We have over six years' worth of reserve of marijuana, and I know that you know the impacts that it's had. We do not have the resources with law enforcement, code enforcement. We've had destruction with the land where someone's come in, hasn't finished their marijuana production, but they've destroyed high-value agricultural land and not irrigated afterwards. Many people have had wells re-drilled, there's traffic, especially out on my road, on Alfalfa Market Road, has become phenomenal, even your own road workers have said so. They can't believe how much traffic's out there. Animals are being hit by cars all the time. It's our food chain. It's not good for human, animals, water, environmental, or air quality for us to have that, and I'm requesting you as Commissioners to do an emergency opt-out. We have enough marijuana growers now, we do not need any more until you know what these ones are going to do, and that's all I have to say.
Thank you.
Thank you. Any questions?
No.
Okay. Suzanne Ritter?
Good morning.
Good morning. And Sam Davis will be next.
I'm a rural resident of Deschutes County. I would like to ask the Commissioners to opt-out. I believe an opt-out would be a win-win for everybody involved, and I will tell you why. The state of Oregon wins because the market is saturated, any more production will go into the black market and not generate a single dollar of tax income. The county of Deschutes will win because they will be able to deal with current issues, not produce any new issues, not have any new problems with fifty percent compliance or dealing with Luba appeals for the next couple of years or whatever else the Commissioners will going to have to deal with. The police department will win because they will not have to deal with any more regulations and surveillance and prosecutions. The D A doesn't have any more money in Deschutes County, and Sheriff Nelson has been against us from the start. The pot growers will win because there will be less competition, no new competition on the market, and the wholesale prices of Mariana have gone down by fifty percent. Even Mr. Anderson stated that most of the growers will go out of business because they just cannot do it. So, by not having any new growers, you're actually helping the current growers, which her grandfather did. So, law enforcement wins, the county wins, the state wins, everybody wins, and the residents like me win. The families win. As was stated many times, Deschutes County is very unique. In around Bend, we have many five, ten, twenty-acre plots where families are trying to raise children in a healthy way. We're trying to have a few cows, do four-H, have a couple of chickens, do some organic farming, and raise a good next generation of moral and healthy individuals in this county. And these kinds of operations are not good neighbors in any way or sense. The cost of not opting out is often also forgotten. As I said several times, law enforcement costs will rise if we produce more Mariana. The wells run dry. We have people in this room that told me this morning, cost them eighteen thousand dollars to re-drill their well because it ran dry because of neighbors that are using this for their very heavy water consumption crops. This was somebody in Redmond. There's multiple cases in Alfalfa and all around the county, and you know about these. Property values suffer, and that is the biggest savings a lot of our families have. Ninety percent of the buyers of our rural little properties would be families with small children. They don't want to buy a place like that when there is a pot grow next door. It takes ninety percent of your buyers right out.
We need to kind of wrap it up. The bell is, that noise is the three minutes.
Thank you.
Thank you very much. Sam Davis, followed by Gretchen Peterson.
My name is Sam Davis, I'm a resident of Tallahassee. I'm a former member of the MAC Committee, and in my previous life, I was a process engineer. We've heard today that the county opted into marijuana because of our ability, it gave us the ability to regulate marijuana. We now see all of these challenges of our ability to regulate marijuana, and because of these challenges, I think it's time for the county to just say, enough is enough, it's time to opt-out and give this back to the voters for a decision. I would like to make a comment on the proposed amendments. I support the amendments except for one item. As a process engineer who've spent thirty-five years having vendors and engineers tell me about technologies that work, and being in the position of trying them and finding they don't work, I think it's time for the county to have a qualified engineer who understands odor control on your staff, who can evaluate the various recommendations by engineering companies, and who really understands odor control. If I drive around the countryside and drive by marijuana dispensary or grows, I can smell marijuana, and each of these facilities is supposedly equipped with an odor control device. It shows that a lot of the odor control devices that are installed either aren't working or couldn't work, or maybe they're just not in operation. My last point is, right now, as you look around the county, there are probably thousands of acres of new hemp, the new crop of the month, and strangely enough, you know, I know a little bit about marijuana, and as I grow, drive by, I can't tell the difference between marijuana and hemp. And what a perfect place to hide an illegal outdoor grow, but in the middle of a hemp grow. And my question to the county is, do you have a solution to this? Marijuana outdoors is illegal? We have all of these thousands of acres of hemp grows where it could be easily hidden. Are we going to do anything to validate that we're really having hemp grown? My presentation, thank you.
One comment, we have actually talked about a staff in regard to reviewing the engineering and the odor control, because it's, and we've actually been looking into that as a possibility if we go forward, so, good.
If you did help, I'll be more than happy to help out.
Thank you, yeah.
Thank you.
Thank you. Gretchen Peterson?
I would just like to withdraw the statement I gave you. Some things have come up, and I'd like to send in a written version by email instead.
Okay. There's one attached to your statement, is there?
Pardon me?
Yeah, the one that's attached to the statement?
Yeah.
Okay.
Just take that away and throw it away, and I'll send you a revised one. Thank you.
Okay, thank you.
How long will the comment period be open?
We'll set that at the end of the day, but it'll probably be for a period of time, you know, enough time to get that in, so, thank you. So, Robert Peterson, followed by Keith Adams, and really, people can feel free to sit down and talk to the mics, or if you want, I mean, or you can use the podium as well. Oh, you'd like to pass also. Okay. Keith Adams, and followed by Stephanie Marshall. Keith, you've, did you submit some?
Yes.
Paperwork, okay, and I don't, was there copies for each of us or just one copy?
Yeah, I was going to, as part of my, I'll go ahead and give them to you now.
Okay.
I'll refer to them in my remarks.
Sure. I've got one here right now, so you can...
Thank you.
You have one, how many more do you have? Yeah, why don't you give it to Sharon there?
County Commissioners, thank you for the opportunity to address you today. My name's Keith Adams, I live in Sundance subdivision southeast of Bend near Horse Butte. I've had a home there for nine years now, and my neighborhood is in the process of appealing a marijuana grow in an unattended, unsecured hoop house that has been approved next to our residential subdivision of about two hundred-plus homes, in between a recreational ranch with lots of youth activity. This scenario does not suggest codes that are too restrictive, but codes that are not restrictive enough. Seems crazy to me that we're here today to have a hearing to consider rolling back changes to codes based on pushback from the marijuana industry. Codes that still fall well short of reasonable protection for our county residents. It would seem to me that the marijuana industry wants no regulations whatsoever, they seem to want marijuana anarchy. I'd like to submit the following article, which you now have, that illustrate what that looks like in Santa Barbara County. This article should disturb you deeply. It illustrates what could happen without significant restrictions and proper enforcement. And I know there have been a lot of people who have spoke today about the tourism in Deschutes County. I think you'll know that Santa Barbara County in California has a tremendous tourist industry, and you'll see from this article that it's being destroyed. Marijuana industry wants to hide behind a political determination made in desperation by the state to cover budget shortfalls. That marijuana is a crop, so they don't do what they want. The fact is, it's certainly not a typical crop, if it's a crop at all. I would say that, you know, if whiskey barrels grew on trees, I don't think we would have orchards everywhere without significant restrictions on time, place, and manner. Look at the regulations that exist for that industry today, and it's tremendous. Marijuana industry doesn't seem to want to coexist within the areas they do business in, they want to take them over. Well, I was in technical sales and marketing at one time, and I had a very sharp and experienced boss that impressed upon me a saying that he had, pigs get fat, hogs get slaughtered. His point to me was that even when you're in a position to take advantage, be measured, because taking advantage will come back to haunt you. The marijuana industry have become hogs, and it's time to rein this back in. There's already too much marijuana growing, even the state that they sold the false bill of goods to recognizes this, as evidenced by the passing of S B two eighteen. More marijuana just means more black market, not to mention enforcement efforts don't seem to be able to keep up. Why should the county waste more time and resource to continue the approval process for more grows, much of which end up in appeal and more wasted effort? I urge the Commissioners to stop wasting their precious time, time you need to deal with the real important issues of Deschutes County. I urge you to vote to opt-out on marijuana production. I'd like to submit to the record following letters from neighbors of mine that weren't able to be here, and some of which are, that urge the same.
Thank you.
Thank you.
Yeah, if you'll give the letters, then we'll get copies of those after the hearing. Stephanie Marshall and Kristen Adams.
I am with Benew Law, and it's the successor law firm to, a law firm that did file the appeal of the land use regulations last year. I submitted a letter into the record, and also to address some of the concerns about items not being addressed to the Commissioners last year, I did attach a copy of the Luba petition that was filed that details the arguments that we raised. So, I just wanted to make a couple of comments, because I think everything is already before you in our submissions. What is not before you in this consideration of text amendments is the reclassification of E F U lands to residential. I do know that when somebody's going to be building a non-farm dwelling in the E F U zone, that property owner has to sign an acknowledgement that there will be farming practices going on around them, and that they may be impacted by them, and they're not permitted to file a nuisance lawsuit to complain about those farming activities. So, that's the law as it exists, and marijuana cannot be treated as a non-farm crop by the county either, because that's state law. I've heard concerns about the black market, you know, black market are the people that operate outside the system, and outside the system, you don't have minor control, you don't have security, you don't have background checks. People that operate in the system have all of those things, and people that are licensed by the O L C C, which are the people that are coming to you with our applications, they have all those security measures. The other thing that licensed operators have to comply with are C to sale tracking. So, those licensed legal operators are not fueling the black market, they're not fueling the over-production that people believe is leading into the black market. So, children are not protected by people that are not operating within the system. The system does include protections for the children. So, we do want people to operate within the system, and if you make it very difficult to comply, you know, the result is that you could have people not encouraged to follow through appropriately. Anyway, I do, I think I've hit the highlights. I did want to make one more quick comment. The staff and the Commissioners have mentioned the ability to adopt reasonable time, place, and manner restrictions. There's another statute at the state level, both have to be read in conjunction with each other, and I wanted to bring to the Board's attention O R S four seventy-five B four eighty-six, and then that is, that's the police power, and it's constrained by O R S four seventy-five B four-five-four preemption, and I'm just going to read that. "The provisions of the statutory scheme are designed to operate uniformly throughout the state, and are paramount and superior to, and fully replace and supersede any municipal charter amendment or local ordinance that's inconsistent with the provisions of the statutory scheme." And then the next statement is that inconsistent local ordinances are appealed. So, there is, there are limits to the police power, and my time's up, so I'm going to leave the floor to the next commentator.
I'd like to ask a question.
Yes.
So, you just made the comment that you, that the operating within the system, I guess you're, paraphrasing, you're saying that the people operating within the system, they're better than the ones operating outside of it, but isn't your whole petition, isn't what you... what you've argued in your petition, that basically, we have no right to regulate at all? And, and, and the people you represent, like the Farm Bureau, they've been in Salem, so how, how can you kind of make those two different positions consistent? Between what you're telling us about right to regulate, I mean, you're really, even the one you just read about the police powers as a way to say, well, we really can't regulate or not as much as we think? If, if you take it all down, there is no system, so, from the county's point of view, so.
Well, that's not what I said, and, and I.
That's what it looks like.
Okay, well, I, what I said is that there are two statutory provisions, and they have to be read in conjunction with each other. And the state has envisioned a uniform operation of its laws throughout the state, and Deschutes County, as you know, is an outlier. It has the most extreme regulations of any county in the state, and, you know, I think that, you know, you, you mentioned how the state is considering maybe pulling back the right to regulate at all.
Well, I don't know if the state is, there's people, like your groups you represent, they're lobbying the legislature, and certain legislators want to do it, but the state isn't doing anything. There's people in the state that don't want to do that, but there are people advocating that, and that's my point, so. And that's what you're really doing when you challenge, in your petition, you challenge all of the regulations we proposed under all sorts of unconstitutional means, so I don't see how you can then say, well, we're better with the people that are working within the system. If you eliminate the regulation, what is left?
Right, well, I'm, I'm gonna let other people address this.
Well, I've asked you to.
Yeah, absolutely.
Comment, because.
Well, yes.
This is on our minds, because this is really different than. Oh, excuse me. Hopefully you've asked to be able to testify, and we'll get to you. I, I'm just talking to the person here, because she's a leading attorney in this issue, and it's something we're trying to ask Commissioners, is on our minds, so please join us as a comment, but it's not an open forum. Go ahead.
Okay, well, I'm not suggesting that the county not have any regulations. Setback regulations, those are specifically identified by the state in the statutory scheme as something that might be a reasonable regulation. When we're talking about things like odor, especially with some of the comments that have already been made, the county isn't distinguishing and cannot distinguish between hemp and marijuana. And yet, you're ratcheting down on, on marijuana odor, and, and I guess I'm, I'm, I'm missing the connection there as to how that's advancing the public safe, public health, safety, and welfare, when you've got crops that smell the same, and the county doesn't have the regulation, you know, the ability to regulate hemp smell, but it wants to regulate marijuana smell. And I, you know, so, so that's kind of.
You're saying we should, we should take all our guidance from whatever is allowed at a state level, and the, Deschutes County regulations shouldn't be anything more than the state level regulates, is that essentially what you're saying?
Well, I'm saying that the Deschutes County regulations have to be consistent with the authority granted to the county by the state. And, and that's, that's the extent of, of what I'm saying.
That's, that's what I'm trying to get, yeah, thank you.
Yeah, great.
Any questions?
No, thank you.
Thank you very much for your attention today.
Thank you. Kristin Adams, and we followed up Deborah Lee.
Good morning, my name is Kristin Adams. I live on the Sterling Drive, and currently, we have a proposed grow going in across the street from my house. I never really thought much about marijuana until I got that letter in the mail stating a grow was going in. I was shocked. I live in a neighborhood, we're two acres to five acre parcels, we have kids on bikes, we have a bus stop nearby, and I don't understand how it can actually go in. So, and I know we don't have enough manpower to monitor a lot of the grows that are already in place, and I would, just, I'm hoping we can opt out if there is an option to do, do so. Thank you.
Thank you.
Thanks, Kristin.
So, Deborah Lee, followed by Mike Hayes.
My name is Deborah Lee, I am an eight-year resident of Sundance, where the skeleton, where the Sterling marijuana appeal is happening right now. My understanding when we moved into that neighborhood was our emergency exit was through that very property, well before we heard anything about a marijuana grow. Being the, the skeleton fire is the example all around the country, we need to be able to have egress, ingress, and egress out of our neighborhood. This, this, all the traffic that would be coming through our residential neighborhood would be ridiculous. And, on a personal note, when I was going to South Dakota in, a couple years ago, before the marijuana was even a legal thing, I was stopped, actually, my daughter was driving, she was a teenager, because we had Oregon plates, and because my daughter was going four miles an hour. And they said, they lied and said that they smelled marijuana on my vehicle, and I told them, that's not true. And then they called the drug dogs, and the drug dog lied and said that there was marijuana, because there's never been any marijuana anywhere near my vehicle. And so, they said that there were sleeping bags in my car, and that's characteristic of drug runners. And the truth is, it's also characteristic of people who are traveling in February, who want to be warm in case their car breaks down. And so, the, these regulations that we have in this state on this industry are not complete yet. Based on my experience in IT, we had to go through software being installed at at least six clients, and I would say that equates to at least six years before we have a reasonable handle around what regulations need to exist. And, we're not there yet, we're not yet there yet. We haven't run through all of the unintended consequences. So, I think we need to increase regulations, or we need to opt out, and my preference would be opt out. Thank you very much.
Thank you.
Thank you. Mike Hayes, and followed by Janet Nash.
Good morning, for the record, my name is Mike Hayes. I am a dispensary owner and cannabis farm producer. Your amendment is based on one species of cannabis, the assumption was there is an oversupply, concerns were odor and water, and the solution is to increase restrictions and increase funding. Cannabis is two species, it's hemp and it's marijuana. Hemp and marijuana are the same thing when it comes to odor, water, and light, the only difference is Department of Ag runs hemp, the county and OLCC run the species too, which is marijuana. It's low THC on the hemp side, high THC. So, you have 2,000 acres of hemp currently, I've done the research, you have 150 farms of hemp. So, how do you distinguish the difference? How do you, why even is odor a concern to you today if you're allowing this? Why not address the black market? There's 30,000 pounds a year coming out of your county, why not address the hot hemp that you're gonna have coming in a couple months? This is a Google Maps, which I've done the research, and all the registered farms of hemp, mine is the red dot on the map, the rest of the blue dots are the hemp farms that surround me. There's no way that you can say the odor coming from my farm is the problem, it is the, it is all of us, we, we all have to be on the same playing field. Your amendment yesterday does not solve the concerns of today. There is not six years' worth of supply, I can tell you right now, the supply is so limited, we have seen the prices increase. I would ask you, and I would ask the people in the audience, would you buy tomatoes that are over a month old? You wouldn't, and we don't either. So there's probably six years of supply in a Conex box somewhere rotting away. Water usage is not an issue, and that was proven by the Deschutes Water Master, and there's no evidence of crime, and I've proven that as well. Your amendment will waste county funds, risk state interference, drive small farms out of business, and increase the black market. Here's the forecast, hemp market will rise, odor will rise, state will be denied, will deny your amendment, and the state will take over your regulations, and it will increase the black market. There is no solution. I'm asking you to stop, regroup, and realign, create a task force to include myself and other people, use the funds to educate the public, don't use the funds to employ two people to drive around the county and sniff farms, it doesn't make sense. Be problem solvers, you're not Salem. I ask, and I want to say thank you to Commissioner DeBoe for having the moral, moral courage to say, let's have a discussion. I ask Commissioner Adair to have an argument that's greater than I support Commissioner Henderson, and I think we can do better as a county. I really do, and if you have any questions, let me know.
Yeah, so, first, so is this something you can provide us as a written document?
Yes.
Do you have it with you, or?
I, I do, and I have all the data support, all the, that I've shown you.
You raised a few questions, one is, so you mentioned hot, hot hemp, what are you referring to there?
Anything over 0.3%. So, all those hemp fields that you drive through, if they go above 0.3%, it's considered hot, right? So, then it's not hemp.
So, we had the Department of Agriculture here, and they, they told us that they have these testing ways, I mean, we, we're very aware that they're the ones that control hemp.
Right.
We've, we're clear on that, we don't control hemp, and the idea we're gonna start controlling hemp, I think is, I don't know, that's a whole nother thing, so I think the legislature would have to give us that authority, but they said they do these testing things, and it's kind of random, and it reminds me of in the pear orchard, where they test one bin of pears for sugar, and that's how they do the whole load of pears, and so, is there a risk, you're saying, because of the hot hemp, or is that the part that's being diverted into the marijuana business, or what's your?
Well, I, I think the concern is, is that we're so afraid of security of the cannabis, the marijuana side of the species, right? But you have this completely exposed industry right now. I live on that, that highway, and I, and so does Commissioner Adair, we drive in, and we see all these hemp fields. We're so focused on one side, very small piece, there's 150 farms right now in our county that are hemp, and only, I think it was 19, and that's all we're focused on. So.
So, but I'm asking specifically about the hot hemp, are you saying there's a risk to society somehow, or us, about the hot hemp, or?
That'll go into, that'll go into the black market. If it, if it goes hot.
Those 150 of your neighbors or county residents, some are, you're saying some of those are black market people?
Nope, I'm not saying that, I'm saying they're registered farms, but some, if, if.
Why would they end up in the, in the black market, then?
Because they can't sell it, right? It's, it's not considered hemp if it's above 0.3%, 3, 0.3%.
Right, so, they also then don't have the right to sell it.
Right, so, it goes into the black market. And here's the.
It's not go, it doesn't on its own walk, so you're saying those people are planning to do that, is that what you're saying?
That possibility is there. I am not those people, but I, what I, what I'm trying to tell you is, if you keep choking out the already tightly controlled industry, all right, we're not hogs, I can tell you that, because I, come look at my books, this, this industry is very hard to live in, but if you continue to choke out that little red dot on the map, you know what that little red dot's gonna turn into? A blue dot. And then you're gonna have no way of controlling anything, because it's all gonna be controlled by the state anyways.
So, let me follow up then. So, you know we're County Commissioners, we're not, and we're not the Department of Agriculture, you know.
Correct.
We don't control hemp.
Right.
This whole thing started a few years ago, before anybody was growing hemp. Hemp's been in our society since the country was founded, it now has become the thing, people are growing it all over the state. Isn't it also possible that it's, it's gonna drop in the market, and it will no longer be the thing, and marijuana will continue going? I mean, I, I think that's possible, have you ever thought about that issue?
Right, it's, well, it's capitalism, right? So, we're gonna, it's, it's gonna level out, and that's what the fear was, there's a six years' worth of supply of.
Just about the hemp, I, I'm thinking about the possibility that.
I am listening.
Hemp will come and go possibly, because there's been hemp in our society, then it's gone away, and.
Do you believe, but I don't believe that, do you believe that? I don't.
So, you think our county will continue to be a thriving hemp world?
Yes.
And, and so you're saying it's, doesn't make any difference, any point to regulate marijuana, because there's so much smell from hemp that it's pointless, is that, that's what I'm hearing you say?
Correct, and I will tell you that those that, Commissioner Adair in the past has said, you know, we don't, I know the rural community doesn't want cannabis, but I also know a lot of those rural farmers who are now growing hemp because it's profitable.
It is profitable currently, but because the market is gonna be so saturated by the entire country growing it, the price has already dropped considerably, and, you know, it is the Department of Agriculture, and yes, it does freeze, you know, when you drive down Highway 20 last winter, it was smelling until February, when the snow actually finally covered it. But, yeah, it's, it's, I know what you're talking about, drive down Cloverdale, you can see all the farms with the hemp.
So, I have a surprise for you. I have a surprise for you, and that is, in the valley, the company I work for, work with, and Boulder are developing huge production sites that will grow hemp year-round, and smell will go year-round. So, you guys are thinking seasonal, it's not. I can easily turn my production facility into hemp, and it will smell year-round with no restrictions.
Outdoors?
Do I have a grow outdoors? No.
You're saying you're gonna leave your hemp outdoors and grow.
No, what I'm saying is, I can turn my facility that I grow currently into hemp and produce it year-round. And so, there's a lot of facilities in the valley, or just two or a 10,000 square foot facility, and just doing that. So how would you regulate that? The same people are gonna have problems then. You know, what I'm saying?
Department of Agriculture, isn't it?
Well, that's what I'm trying to say, let's all be on the same playing field.
So, we have a set of regulations in place, these are the updates, they went to Luba, they're back here on the table, what's your position on the current set of regulations? Because you're talking about a bigger picture than what we're talking about today.
Right, I think the current position is, leave it as it is right now, do not, do not put these amendments in place. They don't do any good except waste money.
Okay.
Okay, thank you.
Thank you.
Well, I, I wanna follow up on that, so, you're one of the petitioners, I think, on the, on the lawsuit, so, kind of a follow-up to what I asked Ms. Marshall, you just said you want to keep the current regulations. Are you not wanting to get rid of any of the regulations, I mean, you're good with the regulations that exist?
I would love to get rid of them, I would love to get rid of them, you know, do you know why?
But you just said both things, then.
No, you're, I, I get that, but I haven't seen that petition in a long time, it's what, 300 and some odd pages long? I support getting rid, I am here to say, because we're addressing what? Adding amendments to what you're doing, right? And I'm saying, I'm good with how it is right now, that's my position, and then we can tackle actually having no regulations on our industry, so we can actually make money.
Which is kind of what I had said, there's efforts to be made to take away the ability to regulate, but, so you.
It's, let me, I'll put it to you this way, because. If, if, and I've forgotten her name, if she was a orange farmer, and I was a lemon farmer, and we're in the citrus industry, and the commission says, hey, lemon farmer, you produce something that's sour, so therefore, I'm gonna put restrictions on you, but you as an orange person, produce something that's sweet, so we don't care. And that's, that's position, that's not fair, I don't care if it's state-run or county-run, you have to look at it as, let's just be on the same playing field, that's why I only brought up smell. I think public security regarding cannabis is important, and OLCC takes care of that.
Good.
Thank you.
And then if you can get us a copy, or?
Yes, I will, any data that you need.
Thanks.
There is an OLCC meeting next Tuesday afternoon, I hope some of you will attend it, here in Band at the River House.
And they're, and they're taking, that's Tuesday night, I think, is it for the public, for the public from six, or 6:30?
Yes.
Six to nine, taking testimony on, is it on specifically marijuana regulations, or?
Listening session.
Listening session by the OLCC, so.
I don't believe you have to sign up for it.
So, Janet Nash, followed by Liz Dixon.
My name is Janet Nash, I'm a resident of Alfalfa, and a former Farm Bureau member, did not rejoin. Given the current state regulations regarding no more OLCC licenses, and a moratorium on licenses, it would be a perfect time for Deschutes County to opt out. It'd give the industry a chance to mature as it is, with what we have, and not keep this unending process of appeals, I've been to many of them, commented on many of them, it takes a lot of time and energy, on your side and on our side. In the Alfalfa area, we do feel surrounded, absolutely surrounded. Four months ago, one of our immediate neighbors listed their house for sale on 62 acres. Two days later, they had a cash offer from an out-of-state buyer. Sound familiar? The buyer had no interest in irrigation of the hay ground, or the lovely home, or irrigating existing trees and landscaping. The buyer set about planting hemp on 20 acres adjacent, directly to two other neighbors. They did not appear to be well-versed in farming, and had replant, and had all kinds of issues. They spent considerable time in closing a hay shed into an unknown facility that appeared They spent considerable time in closing a hay shed into an unknown facility that appears to have living quarters. Since then, both the adjacent neighbors have listed their properties for sale. They've thrown up their hands and said, "Enough is enough." All three neighbors intend to move out of Deschutes County. All three properties are million-dollar properties. Yes, property taxes may remain the same for now, but as fields go un-irrigated, houses less maintained, and landscaping neglected, property values will decline. The new buyers of the hemp growers have already had a visit from the sheriff. Not a great sign for us as neighbors. I would respectfully suggest an opt-out is an ideal solution at the current time. Thank you.
Just acknowledging hemp is different than what we're talking about here.
I understand that, but hemp and marijuana, to us, is pretty much kind of the same.
I know, I'm just acknowledging.
Like you said, the smell is the same.
Thank you for the testimony.
Liz Dixon, followed by Charles Cook.
Good morning. Good morning. My name is Liz Dixon. I'm an attorney with the law firm of Dixon-Hatfield here in Bend. And I have come before you previously representing a number of community groups who were appealing approvals of local marijuana decisions. I would like to start by giving you an update of where you are on marijuana applications. I'm submitting this into the record. This is from the county. What the county's report shows is that you have approved 62 applications so far in Deschutes County for production, processing, wholesaling, and retailing, the bulk of which were production, 49. The number of marijuana operations that you have already licensed in this county should be more than sufficient to meet the demand that people have been concerned about. I'm here today to support the Deschutes County Marijuana Text Amendments, and also to tell you why I think they're reasonable, but also not fully responsive. I am with the camp that is strongly urging you to opt-out, and I'll tell you why. The marijuana regulations are reasonable because you've had three years of experience after giving the marijuana industry the benefit of the doubt. The result of the 62 decisions that you have in front of you has caused 1,644 people that we have polled and will submit to you today who have given you negative comments, either in person or in writing, to this industry. 1,644 separate people. Not separate comments, separate people. They complained to you about odor. They complained to you about noise. They complained to you about light violations. Susan Altman is here today, and she will file those 1,644 comments into the record, so that you can review them at your leisure. They are divided by application. We did not look at all the applications. We only had eight days. It should also be noted that as, at this point, the sheriff opposes this industry, the U.S. District Attorney opposes this industry. There is no one that we can find in law enforcement pertaining to Deschutes County that thinks this is a good idea. And they are the front line in deciding what's safe for us and what's healthy for us. It's your job to figure out what's best for Deschutes County. And beyond that, I'm not going to tell you what your job is. You know what it is. What's the financial cost of all of the applications that you have processed? The applications, the code enforcement, the hearings, the Luba appeals, and believe me, we're not done. Before we're finished, this will probably go to the Supreme Court. The time cost, processing all that, that doesn't get calculated in what you do, but is probably greater than the financial cost so far. What is the benefit to Deschutes County in exchange for all of this time and all of this money, and the terrible processes that you're putting the county people through? 1,644 negative comments. We urge you to opt-out, go with the regulations at a very minimum, but let's end the insanity.
Did you get a copy of this for the record? Next will be Charles Cook, followed by Carol, Carol Fair.
Good morning. I'm Charles Cook. I live in northeast Redmond. Lake Park Estates Homeowners Association. It's five acre and less parcels, 190 each. We're in MUA 10 Mixed Use Agricultural Zone. Thank you very much for this opportunity. I appreciate it. I really appreciate Tanya and some of the direct contacts that Deschutes County has available. I've been involved for five years now in an educational process, like many of you, to stay abreast of rules, regulations, and compliance concerning marijuana and now hemp-growing. So, during that period of time, I have to confess, I'm losing the battle. I'm falling behind. I guess I'm here supporting opting out. But, my educational process continues, because it started with the Oregon Health Authority, because my next-door neighbor was growing medical marijuana. When compliance issues continued to surface, they then transferred with an application to grow recreational marijuana. So, my education with a new set of rules and regulations with OLCC began, and fortunately, Deschutes County had a direct representative that I could talk to there. Now, my next-door neighbor, because of other compliance issues with recreational growing, has now listed their property for sale, which they bought for $250,000, now for sale for nearly $600,000, and it's advertised on the real estate market as a hemp production property. During this time, they've submitted six applications for permits with Deschutes County to increase and improve buildings, structures, to include giant greenhouses, additional electricity, generators, propane installments. It's continued to grow. And so, there's no end in sight. The impact to my personal life, where I've lived for 27 years, has been, I've been verbally assaulted by my neighbor. I've been threatened by my neighbor. The compliance officer who came didn't want to escort me to my property boundary, because he feared reprisal or problems addressed the neighbor. So, I'm hoping today I can find a contact with the Department of Agriculture, so I can now become educated on hemp-growing. So, thank you very much for this opportunity, and the impact to my life and my neighborhood has been great from this whole involvement.
Can I ask a question? Is the grower you're talking about, are they in business this year? Are they not in business this year?
Oh, they're in full production, and we don't know if it's growing medical, recreational, hemp, or all of the above, because the greenhouses are full of plants. There's plants outside, and there's an improved and expanded shop that's involved. And so, I'm hoping I can establish a point of contact with the Oregon Department of Agriculture to find out who's addressing compliance issues, and from what I've ascertained, the Oregon Health Authority, the OLCC, and now the Agricultural Department don't communicate, or share, or combine their efforts.
I think that's pretty true.
Yeah.
I know Nick LeLac has contacts with the Oregon Department of Agriculture, our Community Development Director. If you want to reach out to him, or give him your information, I'm sure, because we had him here. We had the Director of Department of Agriculture here, a year or so more, to talk about the role of Ag Department with marijuana and hemp, so I'm sure there'll be, there'll be somebody you can reach. So, thank you.
Well, we'll continue to try and keep up, but we're not keeping up with my neighbor, because he's staying one step ahead of the rules, regulations, and enforcement constantly. So, thank you.
Next is Carol Fair, followed by Margot Barron.
I just want to say, I'm Carol Fair. I live on a small acreage east of Bend. It backs up to the Rubio Grow, which was declined. Unfortunately, now they're putting in hemp. And I understand, there's nothing we can do about hemp. But, I just want us to continue to opt-out for all the reasons that have already been stated. Thank you.
Thank you. Margot Barron, and then Rowan Hollis.
There's really nothing else to say, is there? We keep running the same record over and over and over again, and the same people get violated at the mercy of a few people that are not neighbors. They never were. They were never part of our community. They don't consider you commissioners like we do, who have lived here for years and are counting on you to protect us. It's only fair. I just heard about what fair is. Very interesting. This young man that got up, and he said, "It's not fair." Marijuana grower. It's not fair of hemp. The only thing that you should be looking at is the people in this room that support our county. We're not here to make a buck. We're not here to see the next greatest thing coming along. We're here to make your jobs viable and worthless. That's how I feel right now. We feel worthless. Many of us have spent many, many hours, many, many amounts of dollars to do the job that we were hoping our commissioners would do for us. Something got mixed up, and we are on the lowest level of concern. And we spend all this money and all this time dealing with people who I assure you will never be back if they can't make a buck off us. We need you. We're strong. Don't forget why we're here. Don't forget what the symbol behind you says. I don't see any marijuana fields in that symbol. I see you and I going forward to make a better Deschutes County and not make it a sad, sad afternoons. Do your job. We're here to help you. Thanks.
Rowan, and then Lindsey Pate. Zap that.
My name is Rowan Hollis. I live on Dodds Road in Alfalfa. Basically, it seems to me that if it's possible that the state's going to opt us out of regulating marijuana, that we ought to opt-out. In other words, if it's possible that there are going to be no regulations on marijuana, then we should opt-out. If we keep the regulations, we can't, we, the county can't enforce those regulations. So, we ought to opt-out. I'm basically saying we should opt-out, because no matter what the regulations are, we don't have the manpower, we don't have the expertise, we don't have the will to enforce the regulations. So, we might as well have no regulations at all, so I say opt-out. Thank you.
Thank you, Rowan. Lindsey Pate, and Hunter Neubauer. If anybody's joined us and you want to testify, there's blue forms over here. You can fill out and turn into Sharon, and we'll get you in the stack here. Go ahead, Lindsey.
For the record, my name is Lindsey Pate. I served on the Marijuana Advisory Committee back in 2015. I'm also an Oregon Farm Bureau member. I'm also the President of Cascade Cannabis Association, which was previously known as Cascade, or Celebrate Cannabis. You know, I'm here today not because my family has anything to gain from this. In fact, arguably, every time I get up here and give testimony, my own business and my family are more at risk for the folks behind me wanting to, I don't know, take us down. But, I'm here because, as the President of the Cascade Cannabis Association, and even before I was in that role, I made a really big commitment to my cannabis community to stick up for workable and fair regulations. For years, I have been expressing concern, so I'm pretty shocked to hear that we felt like, as a county, that in that Luba appeal, that there were issues that hadn't been brought to the table before, because I've been testifying since before 2015 about this. I submitted testimony. I hope you'll take an opportunity to really read through that. I also submitted testimony on behalf of the nonprofit. You know, with the time I have left, it's a shame that we seem to only highlight the, the folks that are bad neighbors. My neighbor thanks God all the time that we purchased the property that we did. We purchased by far the ugliest property in Deschutes County. It was full of noxious weeds. You want to talk about smell? I won't even explain what we were smelling, but it was awful. We've taken that property, and we've increased the value by about $200,000, and that's not including the land uses. That's not including the structures that we've built, and that's not including the improvements that we've made on the home. We weed whack for our neighbors. We snow shovel for our neighbors. We are a community. And it's unfortunate to only hear these negative sides of things, because there are folks like myself and other business owners that are doing everything in our power to put a good light on our industry. And there's always going to be bad apples in any industry, and I feel like I'm repetitive, because I've said this many, many times. The changes in the code that you guys are proposing, they're incredibly concerning, especially considering that with SB 218, we're already going to see a reduction in production licensing in the first place. So, a lot of this is feeling really just like a stab at an industry that deserves fair and workable regulations, when the same exact plant is growing without any of those regulations, and it is not workable, and it is not fair. Thank you.
I had a couple of questions. You've wanted to have dialogue, and usually, we're in the middle of some case, one way or another. And I guess we're kind of on this. I'm curious, you're here, I mean, you're a petitioner in this Luba appeal as a, I think your business is, your organization is, and the Farm Bureau is, so you're kind of a triple petitioner.
Yeah, wear a lot of hats.
Yeah, you wear a lot of hats. Kind of the same question I asked Deputy Marshall. So, are, when we say there's things that are raised, I think it's just the scope of the appeal that was so much focused on, kind of the constitutional, whether we're doing something that we legally can do, et cetera, that really is what we're trying to establish, as being really different than what we kind of spent our testimony on. Is it your preference that we would do away with all regulations, or are you happy with the current regulations, or what?
I mean, I would defer you to certainly take a look at my testimony. You can see how the current regulations have affected myself and my family greatly. It's hard to be tactful, considering what we've gone through. In terms of the new regulations that you're proposing, you are assuming folks are guilty before giving them the opportunity to even be considered innocent by assuming that you're going to have random inspections. And I've been watching the denials that are coming through, and the questions of character. I don't want to get into the weeds on this, but I find it appalling. The fact that the denials are becoming subjective and a moving target. Just look at my testimony, and I've provided you with some really clear comparisons on odor regulations, odor letters, I apologize, ones that I was approved with, same technology, same engineer, same time, same code. I had no problems getting through, and other applicants are being scrutinized. Same exact engineer.
Well, so, is there, I mean, I was involved in the new regulations, and I, I've heard it characterized by people in the industry as really new restrictions, et cetera. Having heard a lot of appeals, a lot of them didn't seem that much of a change. There's still, and I've always maintained that there's, it's not that difficult to get permit. There's been a couple where character was an issue that was really abnormal. That hasn't been a normal thing we've talked about, or wasn't really, character had to do with some violation, et cetera, was factored in. But, but in, is there certain parts of the, the new regulations you think that are particularly... But, but in, is there certain parts of the new regulations you think that are particularly more difficult or whatever?
Well, I mean, I mentioned that, you know, the, the random inspections is sort of turning on its face that you're innocent before proven guilty. I think that your changes, and I'm not done if that's okay. I think that the changes in setbacks and separation distances and changes in parcel size qualifiers are limiting folks like my family who, you know, we're a family-owned and operated business and we have worked so hard to maintain autonomy to where we still own our company to make the right decisions for craft cannabis. And you're taking an opportunity away from families. What you're doing is you're making it so that bigger corporations can come in and buy licensing because as a family-owned and operated business, we don't have the same resources that, that some of my peers in the industry have. And we work really hard for what we have.
But you have a current grow, correct?
We are building that out now. And again, I would ask you to please take a look at my testimony pretty critically, what I've written, because it will kind of explain how, not even the proposed rule changes, but the existing rules that are currently active, how those impacted us coupled with the opt-out back in 2015.
All right, thank you.
Thanks.
Thank you.
Okay, so next is Hunter Newbauer and then Joel Geisler.
Good morning. Thank you for the opportunity to speak today. A lot of familiar faces in here. We've got subjects we've been working on for quite some time. My goal today is just to provide some perspective. I've heard some interesting comments so far about the abundance of supply, the evil people that are part of the marijuana industry. And I'm not one of those people. And a majority of the people in the regulated industry are not those people. I employ over 50 folks in this wonderful county and city. They show up to work every day with a smile on their face. They love their jobs and they love this place. I ski, snowboard, mountain bike, dirt bike. I have three children with a fourth on the way. We're part of the school system. We're part of the community. We also support this county. And I love this county. I love this place. I think what has happened here is unfortunate. I think you guys are in a tricky spot. You've put forth regulations that are very difficult to deal with. You are the most restrictive in the state. You've had warnings from the state legislature. And I think that they are getting tired of it because we are there and I am there. I am the chairman of the Legislative Committee for the Oregon Cannabis Association. I speak with these legislatures, with the legislature frequently. And the approach you guys have taken is not working. I understand that you have special interest groups. You have folks that bought farm property that don't want farming next to them. I get it. There are issues within our county on lot sizes for particular zoning. I think that is probably a more significant issue than trying to figure out how to deal with odor from an OLCC rec farm when it's surrounded by hemp growth. Driving around this area is awesome for me because I get to see the growth of hemp. And I love it because hemp's not going anywhere and neither is cannabis. As soon as it becomes an agricultural commodity, it'll be farmed for textiles. It's not going to go anywhere. You're not going to be able to regulate it. And the odor is going to be there. So instead of taking a stance that is going to put yourselves in an awkward position, I think what we need to do is come to terms with what works. A lot of the regulations you put in place stifle the growth of business, stifle the opportunity for us to provide jobs in this county that support you in your position. President Trump signed the Farm Bill. I'm guessing a majority of you guys also voted for him. He's in support of this industry.
Just stay focused and, yeah, front here.
So, you know, it's, it's sad to see something that is so based on the root of what our country was brought into, was the free will to start a business, to be part of something, to have the freedom to grow something that is legal and was voted into legalization by the people of this county. So it's very sad to see the approach that we've gotten to. And it's unfortunate because this is a beautiful place and I do want everybody to be happy. And it's just not going to, it's not going to work. There's no way it's going to. But I think you're in a tricky position. And I hope that you'll take into consideration the perspective of us who are actually creating jobs in this marketplace. One quick stat. Within the first year of legalization in cannabis in Oregon, 43,000 marijuana permit handler cards were put into place. That's 43,000 jobs in a year.
So I have a couple of questions. So you were part of the Marijuana Advisory Committee. You were part of the Marijuana Advisory Committee. So the regulations have been interpreting for three years. You were part of when they went in, right? Are you criticizing those as stifling business or the new, or you're worried about the new regulations?
So the process that was put in place in the Marijuana Advisory Committee was faulty. You had two groups. One that was willing to come to terms and work within cohesive nature and one that said no to everything. So, you know, the regu, we were willing to give up and spend insane amounts of money on infrastructure, security systems, odor systems, to try to come to some sort of terms. We extended the olive branch and there has yet to this date to be a reciprocation in that. So the regulations of noise now being 45 versus 35 are ridiculous. If you go through any hay farm who's farming hay at night, it's way beyond. So I mean, it's just not.
It was 30 when it was passed and we raised it to 45 because we thought 30 was too.
Correct. But what it is, is it's a way to create an issue, right? So yes, if there's somebody yelling and screaming and creating a whole bunch of issues all night long, that's a problem. But.
I think it was fans and equipment, right?
Correct.
All night long was the sustained noise was the word.
And have you had any of those issues so far?
No, well, I don't know that we've had a complaint on that or not. We've had, I think we've had a couple of complaints, but.
Yeah.
But it was put in. So are you saying that stifles?
It's unreasonable. The ambient noise is above 40 decibels.
So, so you're saying that the committee was split, but there was no appeal of that set of regulations. So now we put in some new ones. You're saying that we're stifling growth, but then you're here saying you have 50 employees that are all happy, you're thriving, you're part of everything. So how, how is what the regulations are doing thriving or how's it stifling growth?
I'm lucky. I was able to figure out a way how to deal with the regulations and build a business. I'm, I'm lucky. It's very rare. Now, those 50 employees are included in my retail establishment and the farm. And we're about to open a retail establishment in Portland and Cannon Beach and Eugene. So our business is growing and the demand for our products is increasing. I can't create enough of them. The reality is that the marketplace is not what everybody thinks it is. There's not an over an abundance of cannabis. The prices have gone up.
But these regulations specifically don't affect you, is there anything in the new regulations that will change?
Yeah, the odor mitigations are absolutely ridiculous.
The fact that we have to have them?
Yes, the fact that we have to have them. You're, you're occurring costs that are unnecessary and unfortunately affecting the environment negatively. The types of mitigation systems that we need to put in place to address your regulations are not good for the environment. They are not good for this county.
But so following that up, my understanding is that's what most of the states have done. They've put odor control regulations in. So I don't think we're unusual in, I mean, it may be unusual in Oregon, but it isn't unusual in America.
I would say that, that's not true.
It's not true in your opinion.
That's not true.
Heard that with Colorado and I believe California, but I don't know.
You don't have people saying you can't grow cannabis outside in other states. You don't have people saying you need to put an odor mitigation on an OLCC rec, you know, or a recreational cannabis farm and next door you have 100 acres of hemp.
Well, you know, I know the hemp's come up now. It's kind of like a morph the issue.
Well, it is.
If hemp wasn't here, we'd just be talking about people doing marijuana. And it's like, well, if we can make enough hemp smell and the, and maybe that's right. I mean, we were warned about this last year, but that isn't our bailiwick. And there are, and hemp may continue, but frankly, if you can grow it in Deschutes County, you can grow it anywhere in America. And it's.
Correct.
And it's not rocket science to grow hemp, I don't think. So there's lots of great farmers out there that grow hay or whatever will grow hemp in other counties, everything. So maybe it'll take up all the farmland in America, but I don't think so.
I don't think so either.
I don't think it will all of Deschutes County in five years.
No, I agree with you. I agree with you. I don't think hemp is going to take over the whole.
But marijuana is a drug used for different reasons than what you're talking about hemp. And so we're just regulating that. So I'm, I don't understand that how it's always brought up as.
Because it negates your, your, your regulations. You have, yeah, you have, you have, you have an OLCC farm right next to a hemp farm that doesn't have any sort of odor mitigation. The folks that have expressed their concerns with the odor of cannabis or marijuana, you're not going to be able to address it. You're just creating a scenario where people who are part of the OLCC recreational system have to put in systems that are extremely costly and not good for the environment. Hemp's not going to go anywhere. I'm glad it's here. I'm glad it continues to grow. I think it's a fantastic opportunity for people who have been farming hay and getting $250 a ton for it.
My last question is, if you're, as chair of the Legislative Committee for the Oregon Cannabis Association or whatever, so have you been in the legislature then talking about repealing all rights to regulate?
No, 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 I'm not, I'm not.
The Farm Bureau is, I know, because our, we've met with their lobbyists, but.
Yeah, the Farm, you know, the Farm Bureau considers cannabis a farm crop like the state does. You know, they have specific stance on that. I'm not against regulation. I think all good systems need regulation. Fair and reasonable regulation is what was put into place with Measure 91, which I worked on. What has taken place here is not reasonable. And so, you know, we tried to put together our committee that was going to be able to come to terms on what was reasonable and it just didn't work. So, you know, it's, it's just a difficult situation. It really is.
Yeah, thanks. Any questions?
No.
Thanks, thank you for your testimony.
Thank you, guys. I appreciate the time.
Is this a new one?
Yep.
Joel Geisler?
Good morning.
Good morning. Susan Putnam, Putnam, I think, yeah.
Yeah, Joel Geisler, 1470 Northeast First Street. I agree with the last guy. I think it's a tough situation. I do think that the regulations proposed are reasonable, but reasonably, reasonable regulations are hard to define. What might seem reasonable to me may not be reasonable to somebody else. So I would encourage the camp, commissioners to simply opt out of this mess. And I do also believe there is an oversupply. There are independent articles that identify the six-year surplus, you know, and like somebody said, I don't know where they're storing it all, but. So, you know, I don't know all the facts, but I think an opt-out would be the best thing for the county. When they opted in, I think they had, didn't really know what the consequences would be, but I think they've exposed themselves as to be something that the neighbors that are involved in this are not happy with. And I think that's been demonstrated with the testimony today. Thanks.
Great, thank you.
Thank you.
I think it's Susan Altman. And then Brad Wheatie. Susan, your, your A looks like a P.
I know, nobody can read my R. I always try to be neat. Thank you for hearing us today and having this open testimony period for everybody. I had a lot of notes, but what I want to address, since it seems to be brought up by the players in the industry, is the idea that OLCC's regulation will solve all the problems and there's no way to get around OLCC's regulations, which has proven to be not true. There have been a number of growers, producers, I think retailers in the county who have had numerous infractions and fines. There have been people who have lost their license. Currently, there are a couple of people who have criminal charges for criminal conspiracy and money laundering against them. And these are OLCC-regulated players in the industry. What Liz Dixon is handing out to you are binders of public testimony that's been submitted for a number of applications, not necessarily appeals, but applications. It's not all of them because there, I don't think there was enough time to get all of them. But also here is a list of the 1,600-plus people who have submitted testimony over the years, people who think that the regulations are reasonable or would prefer to have an opt-out. I think at this time, if the county is in jeopardy of losing the time, place, and manner restrictions that were promised by the legislature, that it is appropriate to opt out. I believe that the industry that recently had a bill pass in the legislature built into that language that would say if a county opted out, then those who are in business would be grandfathered in. And I think that that is a reasonable compromise between the industry and the rural residents and people who are not in favor of uncontrolled growth of marijuana in our county. That's all I have to say. Thank you.
So question about the 1,600. So is that, are these copies of the comments that we have here this set?
Those are copies of the comments, not every, this 1,600 people represent people who have commented, people who have signed petitions, but maybe haven't come before the board or submitted comments, but many of them have submitted comments. And the comments that are in the binders are also, you know, tried to pare it down for not having, you know, a lot of people comment over and over and over again. So not every single comment from every person who's already commented before, if that makes sense, just for redundancy.
What time period are we looking at for the 1,644? Did it start in 16, 15?
Well, I think, I think my guess is probably since the appeals started, which would have been Rubio, which is, I don't remember when that was, 2017, maybe? So two years? Yeah, and I'll give these to Sharon. Thank you.
So you want this added to the record and then your list will go?
Yes, I'll give that to Sharon.
Okay.
And there are so many that, you know, there's a link one.
Yeah.
Right.
Thank you. Next is Brad Wheatie and then Linda Hopman.
Hi, thank you for allowing me the opportunity to speak here. My name is Brad Wheatie. I manage a dispensary here in town. I think, you know, we've been down this road many a times and, you know, we've heard so much different testimony. And I think I'll respond a lot to this by email with all the individual testimonies that were presented today. But one of the biggest things is you guys were allowed by the state, you guys opted in because you were allowed control over time, place, and manner. One thing that the state said that nobody addresses and everybody keeps on skirting around this issue is they also defined that time, place, and manner as reasonable. Nobody has defined what reasonable is. So, you know, a lot of the argument here with hemp and so on is you're discriminating against cannabis and the odor of cannabis when hemp is the same thing. And hemp isn't regulated that way. Sound, you could have a greenhouse, you could run a jet engine if there's tomato plants in there. Yet because there's, the minute that you put a marijuana plant in, now you can't have any sound over 45 decibels now, which is crazy. And like Hunter was saying, the ambient noise level is higher than that. So how, why is it discrimination against marijuana? You know, lighting, all that stuff, same thing. You could have a greenhouse with lights in it, but if there's marijuana in it, you can't. You guys are so discriminating against marijuana, it's not fair and it's unconstitutional. And I think, you know, why is it just because marijuana, it's, it's a crop, you know? Everybody's discriminating against it for some reason and it's just not fair. And if the reg, in your, in your changes here, you don't expect this out of any other farm crop. Anything else is just marijuana and it's unconstitutional and unfair.
He said you run a dispensary here. Do you supply from a grow you're also involved with, all the marijuana? Or do you also buy from other?
We buy from others and our own.
And there's quite a few production facilities in the city of Bend also, right?
Production facilities as far as?
Grows.
In the city of Bend? There's a few in the city of Bend.
You buy from any of those, or?
Yes, and we buy throughout the state. And, and the testimony here also, and, and a few have alluded to it also, there is not the oversupply that people think. There is, there is becoming a shortage. The prices are going up.
One thing, on the sound, we actually increased the level of sound. It was 30, which is.
Yeah, correct, correct. Even 45, even 45 is.
We've had a complicated, I think the idea was that there wouldn't just be sustained fans running all night long.
But why, why do you discriminate against marijuana and nothing else? If, if there's tomatoes in that greenhouse and, and somebody wants to run that fan 24/7, they're allowed to. But the minute you put a marijuana plant in there, you're not. That's discrimination. That's unconstitutional. And you, you stated earlier, you opened this whole thing in saying, you know, that you guys aren't in charge of abiding, how did, how did you put it earlier? You, you started the whole thing with something about the Constitution.
Well, that, it's a, it's a bigger, somebody higher than us is going to probably decide the Constitution.
But, but you also, in you making rules, I think you have to understand that Constitution and everybody's rights if you're going to make a rule that's going to discriminate against it.
Well.
That's, that's your responsibility, I think.
I mean, I think we all would say we've done that to the extent, and the three commissioners that adopted these new rules or amendments did think they were reasonable. Now, a higher court could say they weren't, but we, I think there was a thinking that, that we thought they were reasonable, and that can be, you know, disputed. Two people can disagree on that, but we're.
Part of the state's fault, I think, was, was that they did not define that reasonable. You know, and you guys are, that, that's left open to interpretation. And, and that is, that's not fair.
Thank you.
Thank you.
Linda Hopman and? Okay, thank you. Stephen, is it Pandling? Pauling, Paulding, sorry. And then Nunzi Gould.
Can you hear me?
Yes.
So, my name is Steve Paulding. I live at 62605 Dodds Road in Alfalfa, and I support stricter regulations, so I support the tax amendments. And if Deschutes County lost the ability to regulate, I would also support opting out. This whole process has been an education for me from the time that marijuana was legalized in 2015. At the time, I voted for it. I supported growing marijuana in Deschutes County, but my thinking has changed as I've become educated. My wife and I are personally affected by the marijuana industry in Alfalfa. There are grow operations. One in particular, when I drive to the Alfalfa store, I more often than not smell the odor from the production. And I've tested the sound of their fans, and you can hear them as far as 1,500 feet away. So, and that's, so that's with existing regulations. We're currently fighting an application to get approval to grow right next to us on Walker Road. So, for me, that was horrifying, thinking that I would hear fans all day and smell marijuana all day. So, that's a big reason why I am supportive of stricter regulations and why I see there's a need. I also support unannounced inspections, because I think that's the only way you're going to achieve enforcement of the regulations. If you give advance notice, then, then the grower would have, have the opportunity to remediate the issue before the enforcer, enforcement officer arrived. So, I support that. That's probably the strongest change that I support. I also support the amendment to allow special regulation of the marijuana industry, because I don't believe it's the same as a traditional agricultural product. I think we'd all be better off if it was treated as industrial and was limited to industrial sites. We would not have any of these issues in the agricultural areas. Of course, that's, that's a moot point. But, so, I support the tax amendments. Thank you.
Thank you.
Nunzi Gould, and then Ron Bozell.
Hello, my name is Nunzi Gould. I own EFU land in Deschutes County, and I farm that with hay. I've followed a number of the committees that have been established, and the MAC, and House Bill 3400, and just a lot of language. And certainly, the state gave this county the ability to put TPM in place. And the reason the text amendment that you're looking at came up is because it became very clear that the language that you adopted in your first TPM needed further refinement. I, I would like to add into the record that the federal farm bill was only signed in December of 2018, which was after you put these regulations into place in October of 2018. And I'd also like to put into the record that this county never actually did opt out, contrary to the PowerPoint from staff. What you did is you opted in with TPM regulations. You're hearing again requests to opt out, and I think there is merit to that, and I think it's the job of this commission to decide if you want to opt out or if you want to put in the regulations that you feel are needed to regulate this industry, which the state granted you the right to do. I would like to submit written testimony. I have not seen what has been entered into the record. I'd like to know when the public has a chance to see that so that, that we can respond in a timely manner, how it gets posted. Is it to Dial or to Exella, or how, so we can actually see what the record is. And I also would like to hear, if possible, from county legal as to why they rescinded and brought this back for further discussion. So, I'm not sure that that is in the record, in this record, but I do think as a citizen of this county, if the purpose was for this board to, to follow county legal's advice to bring it back, that we certainly should be privy to what the issues were that the county legal was asking the commission to be considering. And right now, I don't know what those are, other than just having another public hearing. So.
Good timing. So, the June 19th work session, I think, lays out the, the scope of what we're doing and why we're doing it and how, how we brought it back. So, this is in writing from our June 19th work session, and we'll, we'll ask for clarity on how people can read the record, the written content that's going back and forth.
And that includes county legal's points?
It's, it's kind of a summary of what the issue, the basic premise was there were a lot of issues raised at Luba that we hadn't really gotten testimony on or dealt with, I guess, at hearings. And so, this was an opportunity to comment on some of those things that were, that were raised for the first time at Luba. And so, that, there's a memo in the notes that Commissioner DeBones is talking about that kind of lays out all of those things. But we're, and we're willing to talk in detail, but it had a lot to do with issues of, of just the right to farm and the constitutionality and certain other, like constitutional rights that were very, kind of with the whole kitchen sink of objections were raised.
Well, I'm sorry, I didn't actually follow the appeal of those regulations, but I do think it's very telling that the Oregon Department of Agriculture has two terms. It has a term called industrial hemp, and then it has another term called cannabis. And in parentheses, they use the word marijuana. And I do think that if this county is going to implement regulations, TPM, that it should be using the term cannabis with marijuana in parentheses, so that that is in sync with documents that ODA has. And those would be items that you can find on ODA's website, which are as recent as, I think it's January of 2019, January 8th, 2019. So, that is a ODA criteria. And then regarding agency outreach, I'm wondering if Deschutes County included requests to DEQ, which manages wastewater, rinse water, processing water, and the likes of those. In other words, did this county do outreach as part of this public scoping to those agencies? And as we know, surface water and groundwater are connected, so when I drink water from my well, I am the beneficiary of what gets put on our land. Thank you.
So, I got a couple of questions real quick. So, we'll have to review that to see, I can't remember what the role of DEQ was, or whether we've reached out to them with regard to these regulations. It seems like we had some discussion about that at one point. We haven't asked, I haven't asked other people who are growing hay, but I know you've, you've been here a number of times on these issues, and you do grow hay. What, do you have any comments on the testimony you've heard about the, how kind of like the growth of hemp has overtaken the whole issue of marijuana, is kind of what I would simplify it to say, that we shouldn't worry about odor, marijuana grows because there's hemp everywhere anyway, and so you can't.
I think that's outside the scope of the TPM on marijuana, because it's not marijuana. But I think the issue of what happens with hot hemp is a very real thing. Now, you can have hot hemp, and you dilute it with more stem, and then you get to 0.03% THC. So, you can actually grow hot hemp, and then in your processing, reduce it down, whether or not that gets caught by your oversight or not, or even by the very small staff Oregon Department of Ag, which oversees the office here in Bend, oversees six counties. So, to give you a scale of what ODA has on their enforcement iteration, you should see exactly what the regional office here, what turf they get to cover. It's substantial.
Like Commissioner DeBones said, we'll try to clarify access to the rest of the record when we get done. Remember to do that.
Thank you.
If you have any questions for Nunzi.
Thank you, Nunzi.
Thank you, Nunzi. Let's see, Ron Bozell and Captain McMaster, Sheriff's Office, on behalf of the sheriff. Go ahead.
May I speak, please?
Yeah.
Thank you.
Good afternoon, Commissioners, the rest of us. I'm Rondo. I've lived in Bend for 28 years, and it always amazes me when, when people get together and politics draws it together. Some of the first things I see go out the window are their actual belief systems that they talk about every day. We have people who profess love of our republic, who don't show up to work to prove that they don't, that they love their republic so much. And then others who love our democracy, and of course, until a decision goes against them. I do want to remind you that the majority in the state want marijuana. And, and if I can also presume to remind you that a century ago, we had a world economy based on hemp and marijuana, and that was removed by force from us, the people. And so, I'm asking for consideration from our communities and those holding signs with closed ears to consider that we have to place that economy back between, in our communities. And that means it's going to be uncomfortable for some of us. But I have to say, to continue to come back here and hear the continued conversations about smell and noise, just makes me think of John Wayne and everybody else that settled this country, would roll over in their graves. Yeah, that's supposed to be a joke. But to see farmers telling other farmers what they can't grow because it smells seems just really basically anti-American and certainly not democratic. So, instead of holding on to our fixed positions and pretending that your belief systems are one thing throughout the day, and then when you come here.
Focus on the board with your testimony.
Thank you. Of course, I am speaking to that, to you through them. But I am not going to ask you for an opt-out. I'm not going to ask you to opt-in. I want to say that you know what the people of this state want, and we know who's screaming in your ear. The thing is, I do believe in free trade, and I do believe in small government. And I think it's time for this room, all sides of this room, to prove it. Thank you very much.
Captain Master? Before you start, if there's anybody else that wants to testify today, there's blue forms over here to fill out. We're kind of ending the list of forms I've got at this point, so. Thanks.
Good morning, Commissioners. I want to make it perfectly clear, first of all, that Sheriff Nelson wasn't, wasn't able to be here today. He had a prior commitment, and so he sends his apologies. I am speaking on his behalf. So, he is in full support of the commission. He wants to point out that he is very appreciative of the commissioners continuing to fund the marijuana enforcement detectives. He's very appreciative of that. He fully supports the commission in opting out. He, his belief is, is that the state of Oregon does not know better than the commissioners here in Deschutes County, and that they should not be dictating to the county about livability issues here in Deschutes County, and feels its responsibility of the commission here in Deschutes County to protect our livability and our way of life. So, that's really about the end of his statement. I'll ask him to submit some comments in writing, if you wish, and see if he'll do that. And then I'll answer any questions or try to answer any questions that you might have.
Any questions?
I know we had a report from the code enforcement, and I believe the period of time was less than a year. Do you, it was almost $16 million worth of enforcements that they found. Do you know what's happened since then, since we had that report? I think it was about two months ago, wasn't it?
Yes. So, I think what you're speaking of is some of the forfeitures that have taken place around marijuana. So, my experience is, is that those processes for forfeitures through the court system tend to move fairly slowly. And so, we haven't had any information that's new regarding that it's still moving through the process of forfeiture.
Thank you.
And I think we also had kind of a report at that time about arrests and other criminal cases. Has there, has there been anything new since then that you recall?
Not that I recall. They're always, you know, looking for new leads, following up on tips, trying to start new investigations. One of the things that we've discovered over this past year with our marijuana enforcement detective is that these cases are more complicated than what we first anticipated. One of the complications is the financial piece. And, you know, here pretty soon, the new grant year will be starting here soon, believe it or not. Just like last year, the Criminal Justice Commission, their application process will not commence for another week or two. So, we'll be coming back before the board to talk about the criminal justice grant and renewing that grant, just like we did last year. It was late last year. It'll be late this year again. And so, one of the pieces that we're looking to add to that is to try and purchase software that'll assist our analysts with the financial piece of those marijuana crimes. And, you know, part of our focus as a sheriff's office is, we obviously, we're not trying to regulate legal marijuana. We're trying to catch the folks that are growing and selling marijuana and transporting marijuana illegally. And I think that helps. And I think that helps out, you know, everybody in our community. It also helps out, ironically, it helps out the legal growers. So we want to continue to implement that program, grow that program, try and be better at it, try and focus our efforts where it's needed, try and focus our efforts where we can be most effective, and that's what we're striving for.
Another question. You heard some testimony, you're here for the whole time, about the, I guess, about the hemp industry and the issues around that, whether there's possibly illegal activity going on in the hemp industry. Is that something you've, the sheriff's office has begun to focus on, or think about, or is concerned about?
We're concerned about it in the sense that, you know, potentially, there could be growers that are licensed to grow hemp that are also growing marijuana illegally. And in an effort to conceal that operation, they grow, there's a potential for them to grow hemp. We saw that with one particular grow that actually wasn't licensed to... They actually were licensed to grow hemp, but they had an illegal operation, and so we've seen that at least once. You know, hemp is a very productive crop in the sense that economically, it's very profitable. And the thing that scares me most as an administrator and leader at the sheriff's office is that, you know, if we make a mistake and we pull hemp plants that are actually legal and licensed, we could be looking at a substantial cost in replacing that revenue that that grower loses. And so it's one of my concerns as an administrator that I worry about, and so it's another piece of the whole pie or the whole picture to look at. Not that it means anything, but for the sheriff's office, it is a difficulty.
Yeah, okay. Any questions?
No, thank you very much.
Thank you very much. So is there anyone else that still hasn't testified that thought they were turning in a form or would like to testify? That's all the ones I have. Okay, seen nobody. Let's see, this will be the time we discuss if we're going to leave the... Sounds like there's been some requests to leave the record open. I think we want to leave it open, just for how long. I know you had some dates. Before we forget, could you address the issue of how people can see what's been submitted on the record?
Absolutely. For those of you who are familiar with the Deschutes County meeting portal, the basic documents for every meeting, kind of what the packet was up there, those are available for the, at the meeting portal. We also have our own kind of sub-website for marijuana, for the current path. It's deschutes.org/marijuana. And that will redirect you to a page that kind of has a whole timeline of this entire process, as well as all of the relevant documents in a slightly easier-to-follow format than the meeting portal. That'll have the board memos, the memo that Commissioner Henderson was discussing that contains the beginnings of the legal arguments that were brought up. As far as public comments, as I receive them, I've been uploading them to Exela, if everybody has access to that. I'm going to find a way to put them on the marijuana website as well, because there will be a lot of files, so I'm going to figure that one out, and they will be accessible to the public. They'll also be available on paper if you want to come into the office. I maintain a file like this that will probably become like this, and you're welcome to come and see that and make copies of that. So there's usually a little bit of a delay, just in terms of the clerical aspect of it, but it should be usually reasonably within a day to two days, business days.
So just clarify a little bit. So on the deschutes.org website, which is our official Deschutes County, there's what she's calling a meeting portal, you know, it's just a place you select, and it goes into our meetings, and then you can drill down to the date. Like, we had a work session on this, where there were documents provided to us, and there's the things we got today. So behind each of those dates are the documents relative to that date. That's one thing. The other is the going directly to the marijuana issues, or...
And that will contain the same documents, just in a slightly streamlined fashion. So I would recommend that.
You don't have to go through the, figure out what dates we had, what hearings, because we get updates or just, you know, we have work sessions on things that aren't necessarily always the day before. And we may have another work session on this going forward, if you want to see that, that if we have a public work session as to what we go further with, or whatever, so. Okay, so then with regard to the record, I guess I'll close the hearing, or do I close the hearing now, or just close the oral?
Certainly can't close the oral portion of the hearing. It's just, if you're going to hold the record on...
Do you have any, do we have any need to continue the oral part of the testimony, or another date?
I think the oral would be closed. I support it.
Yeah, okay, so...
Yes, close the oral.
So we'll close the oral testimony, and then let's talk about the written testimony.
So there has been a couple of requests to provide testimony and read testimony, so that puts us in a spot where would we kind of do our three-step process for closure on this, or not? I don't know if it would be different.
This is a legislative matter, so I would suggest you could, if you're going to hold the record open, just have two periods, or just have a single one. It's really your preference.
One would be for new written stuff, and the reason of a second would be anybody that wanted to respond to the stuff that came in during a...
Yeah, there's no right to respond in a legislative matter, but if you wanted to do two, you could do a date certain for everybody to dump in everything new, and then an additional time for people to respond to that. There's no real right to police it, though. It's not a quasi-judicial matter. So my preference would be just a single date that you hold the record for anybody to put anything in that they want. And if they sandbag and wait till the 11th hour to put something in that somebody can't respond to, that's the breaks.
What do you think about that? One period or two?
One period per legal.
Yeah.
So I'd like it to be more than a week, maybe...
I think it should be more than a week, because tomorrow is a holiday.
So what, we'd had a calendar the other day, so how far out could we stretch the next period, the open record, a couple of weeks or three weeks?
There's, I mean, there's options for seven days, there's options for 14 days. It's kind of up to the commissioners. Given the timeline, I would say not greater than three weeks. Would probably be staff's recommendation, just in terms of making sure...
Three weeks would be like around the 19th or something, or...
Three weeks.
And then two and a half weeks.
One week would be the 10th, two weeks would be the 17th, and three would be the 24th.
Oh, I was thinking Friday. I was thinking Fridays, for whatever reason.
It's up to the board, yeah.
Yeah, and then we were trying to deliberate that last week of August before, because we've got a, we have a timeline, which we have to make a decision about the amendments. Comes up in September.
We also need to make sure that all the supporting documents are in there that we can respond to, you know, and then...
Yeah. Let's see, two kind of options. One would be two and a half weeks, it ends on Friday, the 19th, or three full weeks would end on the 24th, a Wednesday.
I started seeing the 19th, two and a half weeks, it seems like a good period of time, yeah.
Should be fine, don't you think?
Adam, did you have any thoughts on this timeline? You thought there might be some other written comments coming in?
I would recommend certainly a minimum of two and a half weeks to the 19th. If you want to push it to the full three weeks to the 24th, that would be sufficient for staff's purposes as well. It's the board's discretion, we'll work within those timeframes.
I might suggest the 21st is a more realistic deadline, recognizing staff's probably not going to come in that weekend and gather everything and get them printed and on the commissioner's desk.
The 21st is a Sunday.
Right, so if you do Friday at 5:00, my point is, you've taken away two days for the public to submit something, and staff's probably not going to be in on Saturday or Sunday compiling all those and making photocopies and whatnot. I don't know, maybe Tanya's planning to be here that weekend, but...
I'm going to be in Paris.
But that's good.
So the 21st is fine. I'm good with the 21st.
Great.
That gives people that wait till the last minute, a weekend to get it in.
To work on it.
Sunday afternoon.
Sunday, the 21st.
So it sounds like we have a consensus for that date, so we'll do that.
What time then, at 5:00 PM or something, on the 21st?
What's that?
It could be as late as midnight if the system would break it.
We could say 11:59 PM.
Okay.
Yeah, there's no point, it's not business hours, so...
Okay.
Yeah. So, all right, and then I just encourage anyone that wants to comment on specific regulations, there is, that list is available here. That was really the, things have kind of morphed in a way to some other topics, but those would be something we'd also continue to be interested in, so, thank you.
Based on that open record period, do you want to identify a date specific for deliberations?
Well, we had it down as the, possibly the 29th, but, or is that what you had it down as?
A week later. That kind of works if...
Have a week to do it. It could be possibly the 31st, I guess, also, but it'd be one of those two days, but you might want to do the 31st, and that would be a meeting down here.
Did board not in session for some reason?
I was told that the board is not in session that day.
On the 31st?
Oh, the fair.
Oh, it's the county fair, it's the first day, we will not be here.
We started this off with the fair today, and now...
Oh, yeah, so, oh, that's still in, yeah, I was...
We'll be at an opening ceremony at the town.
Well, I don't know, I mean, we've got into September, so we've got, we have the month of August, so it's possible we do it after.
So the 5th of August. So you're asking for a kind of a date certain, because that'll... If you have one, if not, we'll post it and deal with it that way, but if you want to pick a certain...
Yeah, I'd rather, I think I'd rather do it after the fair.
Okay, then actually, can we do it on the 7th?
Yeah, so that would be the meeting down here on the 7th.
5th of the 7th, yeah, so...
Okay.
Want to say the 7th?
Yeah, so, okay, so at this point, we're setting the date for deliberations of this, which would be when we look at the record, testimony today, et cetera, and deliberate on our path forward, would be August 7th, apparently.
And potential first reading if it's...
Yeah.
Because that's how you get it moving forward. So potential first reading, I suppose.
Yeah, potential first reading. So we have to do three readings after we make a decision. So if we make a decision on the 7th, that could be a potential first reading, so we can do the other two before it's submitted.
September 3rd is our final deadline.
Just two readings, two readings.
Oh, just two readings, okay. All right, any other business on this?
So there was a very specific request for opt-out, and I would just like to maybe put that in perspective, just the concept of what that means, opting out of the marijuana production, the licensing in the rural county. In fact, I don't know if you'd be ready to kind of run through, Dave, help us with that, or...
Yeah, you'll recall, the county did actually opt-out on December 21st of 2015, that was ordinance 2015-009. The county rescinded that opt-out at a subsequent date, when they were assured that the legislature would allow them to have reasonable time, place, manner. So we've been down the road of opt-out before, it requires a county ordinance.
Can I say a comment there? So the first opt-out was to work on these regulations, and if we would not have opted back in, it was set for a date to be elected, to be voted on by the countywide.
Right, so once the opt-out ordinance is enacted, unless it's rescinded, or I should say repealed, unless it's repealed, it would go to the voters at the next general election, which in this case would be November of 2020. The voters then have the opportunity to either confirm the opt-out or reject it. If they confirm it, then it stays in place. If they reject it, then I believe, effective the first week that following January, the opt-out would be repealed by vote of the people, and then you'd be back to the regulation piece, assuming that the legislature hasn't removed that option in that interim. So that's kind of how it goes. You have the ability to opt-out of the identified marijuana businesses other than medical grows. Those are off limits, but recreational grows, production, processing, retail, wholesale, within the rural county. Again, this wouldn't affect any of those types of operations within city limits, but within the unincorporated county is where that jurisdiction of your opt-out would be.
And it's a countywide vote, and yeah, existing land use would be non-conforming existing uses, so there would be valid, valid OLCC licensing and land use.
That's correct. At least for purposes of your opt-out, the ones already in place would be grandfathered in. Now, they have annual issues with OLCC or OHA that they still need to comply with, but at least for county land use purposes, those would be, would be, in essence, a term of our grandfathered in, yeah.
So everybody's clear with this? In the last legislature, there was a bill passed that was promoted by the Farm Bureau, et cetera, that allowed for this. If a county opted out, there would then be the, those businesses in existence would be, use the word grandfathered in, but they would be allowed to continue as long as they met their other regulations. Now, if we opt-out at any point in the future before that election, that means no new applications can come through, is that correct?
Yeah, from the effective date of the opt-out, staff would not be authorized to accept applications in that category that the board opted out of.
Yeah, and there are a few applications, I think, in the pipeline are still under consideration, so those would be, and then that would be true until the election date, and then, and then if the opt-out was upheld by the voters, would, or not upheld by the voters, would the regulations we have in place at that time be in effect, or would you have to go back and do new regulations?
It would be the regulations that the county has on its books at that time.
Okay.
And I should note that the opt-out in 2015 was with an emergency clause, required unanimous consent of the commissioners, but for that, it would have been the typical 90-day, two readings, 14 days apart, and then effective date 90 days later.
So the question of enforcing the opt-out, it really is just, no one can come into the business, basically. Nobody can start an application from the date of the opt-out.
But you still enforce the rules, how's it pass?
On the, on the entities that are existing, yeah, on existing businesses, the regulations at that time would continue, so, yeah. Okay, well, thank you all for joining us. We've got a couple of executive sessions, we'll probably do them after lunch.
So you want to set a time for a follow-up meet upstairs? 1:30 maybe, 1:00?
Yeah, so, meet at 1:30 for executive session, or?
So, I don't know, we'll talk in a brief way.
Okay, so thank you all for coming today, and... Do we need to... Thank you. Thank you.
Absolutely.
We still got to conclude this section of the meeting.
We got to finish the meeting, we're still live here a second, I guess, so, thank you. Do we need to do it on the record? No, we don't need to do it. So let's just...
Did it? I...
Here we go.